Good evening, everyone. I called to order a special meeting of the Victoria City Council on June 3rd, 2019. This meeting was called specifically to discuss the 13.5 acres. Just as a reminder for the council, we need to limit our discussions to that and that alone, since this is a special meeting with that. Let me turn it over. Dana?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, members of the council, tonight, as the mayor said, the purpose of our discussion is to talk about the 13 and 1/2 acre development project. And we have, I think we're all familiar, we've been talking about the development, the parcel and the development for quite some time. And this evening, we are fortunate to have our development team that we've been in conversations with. We do not currently have a development agreement, but that is what we're working toward, and that is part of the purpose of the meeting tonight. You all have had opportunities to interact and meet with the development team individually, and so this is an opportunity for us to bring the conversation back to the public realm and make sure that we have consensus for staff as we go and continue to work toward that development agreement, that we make sure we're executing your vision and what your direction is. And so it's an opportunity for us to all hear the same thing and make sure we're all on the same page as we move forward. The second piece of that is to talk about, we talked about a memorandum of understanding. We do not have a specific MOU for you to sign or approve tonight, but we wanted to talk about what the next steps are and how we're going to get there and what does that path look like. As part of that MOU, we're going to be talking in deal points, so we don't have numbers or we don't have specific things for you to share. Staff did receive some preliminary numbers last week, late last week, and we just didn't have time to sit down and run that through and cost model, so we don't have the information to bring back to you at this time to say, this is what the impact would be on the city based on their proposal and what the impact would be on our existing tax base, if any. We haven't had the opportunity to cost model that out, and that's going to happen in the next week or so. And so, once that information, along with the development agreement, as that proceeds, as those things come together, we'll be bringing that back to council for another update and possibly action. The final piece tonight is to look through, well, we talked about an LCDA grant application, LCDA being Livable Communities Demonstration Account Grant. It's funding dollars or grant dollars available from that council. And every year, they award a certain amount of money to communities. This year in 2019, $7.5 million will be awarded to communities on this LCDA grant for construction. And the city, it's a competitive process, and the city intends to move forward with that application. The development team has some experience in writing and contributing to these grants. It's usually a collaborative partnership between the developer and the city staff in getting that executed and application in. And so, part of the conversation tonight would be defining those roles and responsibilities and potentially executing, directing staff to execute a contract with Mr. DeVolus for contractual services to assist with that grant application, which is due July 1st. So, that being said, that's kind of a brief overview, a brief, long overview of what we're hoping to accomplish here this evening. So, we don't have any specific presentation. We thought it was just going to be an informal discussion. And most of the time, I think we've allotted about 40, 45 minutes for the presentation itself, and then we can have discussion as part of that. But most of the time, we're going to have our development, our development team kind of present to you or start, and then Pat Smith, our Community Development Director, and I will chime in as we can or need to.
Before we get going, is there anything, specific outcome or direction you need or looking for from the council tonight?
Outside of the LCDA grant, we would, we're asking that if this is something that you want to pursue for this year, and you want the team, the development team in front of you to assist with that, that you direct staff to enter and to negotiate a contract and enter into a contract with them, we would bring that back to a very near-future council meeting for you to actually execute. And then the other was just give us direction on what do you like, what don't you like, what gives you heartburn, what are you excited about as we go through the deal points.
All right, thank you. Council? Anything to add real quickly? Okay, I would ask each of you, I guess it would be easier just at the beginning, if each of you would just come up very briefly, say your name for the record and your position and your role in this, just so the public understands. And then, after we've gone through that, is Dean going to do the presentation? Dean, are you going to do the presentation?
Just the high level, but always start first.
And Mayor, members of the council, our development team friends, because we are limited with our AV equipment currently, so if you're going to be speaking, if you could come up to the podium, because this is being recorded for the public, we want to make sure that our public that's tuning in has an opportunity to hear you from home and online.
Understood.
Thank you.
Members of council, Mayor, thank you. My name is Greg Anderson, the founder of Anderson Companies. We would be acting as a master developer and taking positions of equity and ownership in some of the properties, and also helping the city and the overall team negotiate other development opportunities on site that we would potentially be a minor participant in, but also directing that along with the rest of the team and staff.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, members of the council, my name is Michael Margulies. I'm a development manager for DJR Architecture, 333 North Washington, Minneapolis, Minnesota.
Dean DeVolus, the principal, DJR Architecture, and I'm really helping pull this together. You wouldn't necessarily call me the quarterback, because really, this is a process that really involves city staff, this group, and council working together, so really consider me just part of the team that's going to make this happen.
Thank you.
And as a presentation...
Oh, sorry.
One more introduction.
Forgive me.
My apologies.
Good afternoon. I'm Ella Carlson. I am Director of Marketing and Communications for Anderson Companies. I will be assisting with some of the community engagement on this project, as well as the marketing side. So, once we get up and going, I will help facilitate a lot of those activities.
Thank you.
Craig, you want me to lead or you want me to lead?
So, I'm not going to, I'm going to be brief to allow council speak, so I'm just going to have a quick overview of where we're at and what the opportunity is before us. A lot of credit goes to council and staff to get us to this position. And the reason why we were, since one, was the courtesy invitation from Pat that really got us here in the first place, but also, and Dana too, but also the privilege of meeting with all the council members. What you have done is preserved and created a downtown that's really unique within this metropolitan area, and it's started becoming asset and an envy of the Twin Cities because of its uniqueness. Most cities, and I won't mention names, have opted to go a different route, which is more what I call suburban-style development. I want to give credit to council and staff is that you're willing to develop the 13 acres in a unique aspect that is harder. And I'll be truthful to council, this is not the easy way through the process. Easy would be sell individual lots surrounded with parking, put a retail America office in each lot and call it good. You probably would have a waiting list for that type of development. But, that type of development does not endure over time, much like your downtown is starting to endure over time, and that's really becoming a key piece. So, what our goal is, working, let's say, the three-legged suit of council, staff, and ourselves, is to really adjunct and support the great downtown you've created and work within this realm that you see before you to allow a variety, community-based retail to occur, a variety of housing to occur, and a variety of open space that ties with your trail system and ties with downtown. And that is really our goal and process to work that. So, in order to accomplish that, we have to design buildings in a certain way, we have to create the site plan in a certain way that's more incremental, more flexible, so that the thought that the buildings and elements can survive over decades, as opposed to building one-time buildings which can tour down and replace. They think of more historic development, the buildings were made to evolve and change over time, and so these become permanent assets to the community. And as uses change and retail increases or different type of real good housing needs, the buildings can convert, the public spaces give a technicality that people can interact, and the parking allows a flexibility. So, you start to build onto the community value created as opposed to work against it or change in basis. So, it's a tall order, but a task that, to your credit, we're going to all embark on together and make this occur. And we pulled together, another thing we're going to work for to help you get there, which is a key part, which Dana mentioned, is we're going to also work towards to see how much of what I call public financing could be pulled in as a system city, i.e. the LCDA deed grants and other sources that could be part of it to really help spread the burden to making this project happen. Because of unique design, unique aspects, this city is very eligible for these grants, and that really gives you a leg up on what I call the competition and the fact you're first come, you have your leg up on it. So, this group is very excited to work with council, and obviously we have to work fast because we have a July 1st deadline facing us, but we really relish the opportunity because of the excellent start you've given, and be truthful, we're proud to be here to really make this a vision that'll endure forever. So, that'll be the end of my remarks, and Greg, if you want to add anything to it, you're more than welcome, or Michael. Otherwise, I'll conclude, and I'll leave it open to council for questions.
So, the, I think at this point, before council gets into questions, Dana, Pat, do you guys want to talk a little bit more about any of the negotiations?
Mayor, members of the council, we can do that. I'm just trying to bring up a document here, so I apologize for stumbling for a moment, but I think what I'd like to say is that staff and the development team that is before you has had many conversations, and they've been, they've been great, they've been productive, we're all excited in carrying out this vision, that council and the direction that you have. So, that has been the goals and how to, what are those nuts and bolts and how do we get there? And then, our role as staff and council members to make sure that we have value to the community, to the public, and that it's a win-win for everybody. And so, with, using that lens, that's the, kind of the lens that Mr. Smith and I bring to the table. And we're talking about different, when you have a development agreement, there's many different ways that you can do this, and this design isn't just unique, but the agreement and the deal points are rather unique or different. It's not what I would call traditional development agreement. And so, those conversations have been really interesting and different, and a lot of, as you can imagine, because it's new, not something that we see, there's a lot of questions, right? A lot of unknowns, and we're kind of working through that. And so, in terms of high-level kind of deal points, and I can, I'll ask you all to jump in if I'm misrepresenting, or Mr. Smith to jump in as well, I want to make sure I've got this right, there's different types of things, and it would be helpful for council to kind of react, maybe, that would be helpful for us as we go through, when we regroup staff and the development team, that we know kind of what our focus needs to be. So, we can really get to work and make sure that we can get a development contract for you and move, continue to move forward concurrently with that LCDA grant application. So, a high level, when we talk about our developers, they've got to make money, right? And so, they bring a project, they got to make money, and one way is to do that in the deal point is to talk through the, so sometimes you see like a city will give, if they own a piece of land, they'll sell the land to a developer for a dollar or $2,000 or $5,000. So, that's not necessarily what we have here, there's a little bit of that here. They've proposed taking this bigger chunk and dividing it into small, smaller pieces, and so there is that portion of, you know, a couple of those sub, we'll call them subparcels for a dollar, but the bigger pieces also, the, a percentage of total project costs would be the fees that they're proposing. So, that's different than what we've talked about coming into this. I think what you've heard previously is that they were exploring a proposal that would be a percentage of the land costs. So, this is different, this is percentage of project, total project costs. So, we wanted to kind of feel you out and see what you're, and recognizing, you don't have numbers, so you, we're still working through, we don't know what that impact would be, but we're asking for gut feel, direction, are you comfortable? Should we continue to explore this, or is this something that's completely off limits and you want us to go a different direction? So, that's kind of the level of conversation we're looking for, recognizing that we just don't have the level of detail, the numbers in front of you for you to make an informed decision. The next step would be to bring back the specifics, kind of like your guts telling you, okay, staff, go look at all these things, and we're comfortable with a development agreement that is by percentage of, you know, we want to see what that percentage of total project costs would look like in a development agreement and what that means to us as a city, and whether that would have an impact. We would bring that information back to you so you can make an informed decision at that time.
So, two quick, real quick questions. I think this would help the public also, and you guys, guys and gal, feel free to jump in here. One, I'd like to hear comments on, so you've mentioned that this is not a traditional deal, how does this, for the public and for the council, how is this different than what is quote-unquote a traditional deal? And secondly, I'm sensing here that we're trying to establish a framework for how this deal would be structured, and we haven't even agreed on that framework yet.
That is a true statement.
To how it's going to be done. So, could you provide a couple of comments on those two points?
I'll actually defer to Mr. Smith to respond to that first question.
Add one bit of information, my apologies. The one thing we did make as a development team is the commitment to do the first two buildings as part of this project, which is the two buildings that face the town oval. I need to, I just want to get that, I should have mentioned in my presentation, so my apologies.
No, that's fine. Pat?
So, a typical development agreement is a developer comes in, buys property with the city, a purchase agreement essentially, and then proposes what they're going to build on that property. And then you do your due diligence, how much is the cost going to be for the infrastructure, for the improvements, and where is that gap? And part of that development agreement is the city and the developer agreeing to some type of financial assistance to close that gap. What this is, is more of a development management team approach, where they would be developing one or two of the buildings, but then wanting to be a kind of a development team project coordinator for the rest of the buildings. And they would like to get a fee from the city to be that project management team.
In essence, in simple, very simple language, like a general contractor that would then manage the other pieces beyond the two buildings that have been mentioned?
More than a general contractor, more like a marketing person, more like a broker, more like your, a development consultant, working with developers, making sure that they're finding the, or they're meeting the design guidelines, things like that, than more than a contractor.
They want to manage the property.
Correct. Manage the development part.
No, it's a good, it's a good foundation, but one thing that's a little more specific to this is that when the vision and all the uses of this property are lined up and they settle down, because there may be some changes to that, our intent for our fees that we're requesting would be to go to the marketplace, bring the groups in that are experts in those areas, manage their activity, make sure they fit within the guidelines that'll be created, bring them through, know that they're viable from the get-go, and then introduce them to city staff and you as council. So, we'd be soliciting, managing, and guiding them through the approval process here. In some cases, we'll be joint venture partners with them, and some will own it straight up, depending on the product type. When we were first in front of you at one of the previous city council meetings, because of all the uses here, it's not a one-developer type of development, there are a lot of different uses here, and we have the connections to those to help effectuate what you have in mind.
So, is this like a long-term development, so even after it's built, you're still managing it?
No, ma'am. For some of the, for some of the projects that we may own, we may be a manager, property manager, but the other developers, or whoever they might be, would manage those properties themselves. We wouldn't manage the property long-term, just the properties that we would own.
Until it's developed, you would manage it?
We'd manage the process until it's fully developed, that's our current intent. Correct.
Oh, okay.
Excuse me, I think the thing I'm having trouble with is getting some basic information. To me, there has to be some kind of order of magnitude here, so I understand the value of the project, so we can understand the fees and the other costs are reasonable in proportion to that order of magnitude. So, first thing I said to myself was, what is the market value of the land that we're talking about here? So, starting with, you know, in days gone by, we've had conversations with companies that said, you know, a scenario might be that we give you the land and you provide all the infrastructure, that kind of thing. So, it's important that we understand the market value of the land right now, and even if it's an estimate, it will be an estimate. The second thing I need to understand is, these buildings, when this project is built out, what is the market value? Or not necessarily the market value, what will be the total cost, build-out cost of the whole project in terms of buildings? Do we understand what we're talking about here?
Understood.
And I, and I know you want to go with two buildings, which to me, sounds good, but it's still, in order, we talk about fees and percentages and dollars, this, you know, of dollar amounts, to me, they mean nothing until I understand how this fits into the overall costs and the value of the project.
Understood, and those are the next conversations, excuse me, we'll be having with staff with magnitudes of projected value, projected fees, projected return on taxes, so on, so on. That has just been introduced, but we haven't got to the next layer yet with staff.
The thing I worry about that is, in order to come to some conclusions in the next three weeks, so that we are viable, looking at livable communities grants or whatever, some of this has to be, come together fairly quickly. So, this is not something hypothetical, this is not an equation that I think is going to get solved over the next six months, it's an equation that we need to have solved in the next three weeks, at least to a certain degree of confidence.
I believe I can speak on your behalf a little bit, Dana. Our intent was over the next few weeks would be, if we have approval tonight to do the LCDA grant this evening, to go quickly with that, and in turn, go quickly with getting a development agreement in front of you with terms.
Because development agreement is part of the LC grant package.
Correct.
So, it's, they're, they're the same thing.
You can't have one without the other.
Right.
Right, it's part of the application. Agreed.
Dana?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember vote, Mayor, members of the council. Just to clarify, we did first get the numbers late last week, so Thursday, so staff has had a first pass to look at some numbers as they presented. We've already reached out, we staff have already reached out to our financial advisor and brought Tammy Amdal with Northland up to speed on stuff and have gotten those numbers in front of her. And so, she's prepared and ready to help us do some cost modeling, so we've already got the ball in motion where we can execute things fairly quickly after this evening. And I think Mr. DeVolus and I have already talked about the intent to actually have staff and the development team meet yet this week to continue conversations and move forward. So, it is a priority for both staff and the development team, if it is the direction of the council, to continue moving forward, to do that at a very fast pace. But, we just, from a staff perspective, one and a half business days was not enough time for us to feel comfortable enough to bring you numbers for this discussion.
Thank you, Dana. Council?
I still reiterate my statement, we can't have intelligent discussions unless we have some numbers.
Mr. Anderson...
We're talking in the abstract.
Is it possible, I'm looking at these first two buildings and comparing them to the Victoria Flats, and I'm going to throw a number at those two buildings at 40 million. That's just my number. If that were the number, could we, could we hypothetical, talk about some of the other pieces that would fit into place if that were the number?
The first two buildings will be combined 40 to 50 million dollars.
Can, excuse me, can you point out, just for our sake, which two buildings we're talking about?
Minus five. Play mana?
That'd be great. That'd be great.
This one and this one. These, these two buildings that surround the town oval.
Is that, is that the L, or is that just one wing of the L?
Well, the base, we're looking at 150 units, based on demand, it could be more. The century, we're committing 150 units.
So, it's just the base, it's not the L?
It's the base, and if it's more than the L, it'll come with it.
I think we also need for that, we need a little more flexibility as to what may happen to the west. We'd like to have that flexibility for that larger land parcel, depending on what other uses may come to play. So, right now, the intent is that the two buildings that border the Central Park, if you wanted to call it, the park, that area would be completed and improved, the infrastructure would be in, that would be the first push for this project. So, once we're in a position to throw the flag to say, okay, we're ready to go in the ground, you would be notified, of course, you'd know about that, but infrastructure would have to go along at the same time. Because we would have to be the ones that are going to spearhead this, it's difficult to go to the marketplace and say, infrastructure's not there, but we need to get two buildings in the ground, so they're going to have to go hand-in-hand. That's all there will.
So, what are some of the components of how the rest of the deal would be structured if that were, if those two buildings cost 40 to 50 million? How, how do the other pieces fall into place?
Understood. What we would do is, first off, those two buildings have to meet the vision of this property. And if it's local retail underneath and housing above, to be determined, to be finalized, then they would fit your vision for the property. The next step is we'd go out and have more product that would be complementary to that vision, and the final vision of this plan or a plan that gets revised somewhat, but this is the current intent. For instance, grocery store may not take place here, we don't know. We've investigated with a few of the grocery providers here in the Twin Cities Western Market, not a lot of first-pass interest, but nonetheless, we're going to continue that push if it's out there. So, the next steps would be for us to continue to look at for-sale townhome purchasers and developers, additional housing developers that we may joint venture with and proceed to keep this thing moving forward.
Let me, hang on just one second, just for the public, are we picking up where Dean is pointing on the, on the screen up here? Does the public see where he's pointing to? No?
No.
Can you just step back just a little bit?
Pat, is there a way to...
Well, I could point out as well.
Oh, good point.
Right, I want the public to be able to see what you're talking about here.
Do you need a highlight?
Well, I just got my cursor here.
Just real quick, let's just pause for a second. Pat, can you kind of circle the first two buildings, what they talked about, that infrastructure, and show the townhomes, and then, Dean, if you want to kind of stand by him and kind of guide him through? This is a workshop, so we're a little located here.
No, sure.
So, here's the first building, fourth, I'm on my cursor.
May I ask why you...
May I ask why you decided on these two?
The reason being is the infrastructure within the park, call it the park again, the intent is to have a lot of underground stormwater storage there that will serve quite a bit of the development. That needs to be established early for the other developments to be, to utilize as well.
Because if you do those first, and then you have to build these townhomes in the back, you're going to have construction going along all the time, disrupting that, I would think. I would think you would want to start back and then come forward.
Well, our intent is to create the feature, finish the feature, and have that little community with housing on both sides. I truly believe that access for the, the townhomes can be managed.
Okay.
I really do. But I respect your comment.
We can come back to that. Pat, again, for the public, can you point out the two buildings with the cursor and the central town square, if you will?
Here's the central town square. Here's the two buildings that they are targeting for development in the initial phase, and these are the townhomes that are along the Carver County Park Reserve on the edge of the development.
And show where Dean said that L on that, on that one building would only be built depending on demand, right? Right now, it's just the, the...
Straight.
Right, the straight part there, not the L part.
Not the L.
Correct?
Correct.
And then, Dean, you said the next phase would what? The next building's over?
So phasing, and I'll, I'll answer your question too. So the next phase is getting, and we have to get the park, the infrastructure, two buildings, to get that started. The townhouses along the perimeter, probably the next logical phase, is infer construction eruption, we can bring that off of eleven, coming in from the backside, so not crossing where we built already. Because what the beauty of the city has, multiple entrances, so we can get at it from different directions. So it'd really be sent those townhouses, and then working the main building you see in what I call the extension Steger, so, Pat, if you just want to outline the main road that goes up to eleven. And then probably the last portion is going to be what I call the grocery store portion, which may get built as drawn, or may change, depending what we discover out in the marketplace.
Dean, well, you need to create a design standard for this area, and including, say, that piece on the lower corner of this, would be the, would be the southeast corner of your property, would you have to incorporate a design standard for that?
Yes, because what we want to do upfront is we want to get the expectations established for a development community, including ourselves, because that's really important, because, because this is a really joint venture between staff, council, and ourselves. We're all going to come to an agreement of what this future of Victoria is going to look like, and really, the design standards is a first agreement that I really want to see get put on the table, organized, and agreed upon. And that would include, I call it the neck, which is really the Steger extension that goes between downtown and the town park, because that's crucial, because one part of making this work is establishing how this ties into downtown, how that extension works. So yes, it would include the thirteen acres, it would include the Dairy Queen property, the daycare property, though they may come later, and the extension of Steger up to where it intersects with downtown, so it'd be that whole district. We establish those rules of what this is going to look like, and how it's going to step back, and, and the various uses that are going to be incorporated within it.
And these could all be various phases?
Correct.
Okay. For the public's benefit, can you point to where, where he refers to the neck, right? It's really in the north side of Steger.
Correct.
Coming towards downtown, right? It's east of the, the, one of the first buildings. Mayor?
Yep.
That's right.
Which, which should be very walkable and, and easy to traverse.
The same elements that we're putting within the design have to occur on that extension of Steger to make this work. It's going to be the same ideas that you see here. The only reason to draw it in the original proposal, because it was someone else's property, so in respect, we left out, but in a steady basis, we can put those slots forward.
I have a question related to the square, the town square, park area slash stormwater facility. How much is that going to cost? And where I'm leading to is, okay, so how do we pass this cost on, allocate it to the rest of the development, so the city can manage?
So I'm not going to go, I'm not going to jump in the costs, so keep that aside. But I will talk about how, ideas how it could be, as we develop this, you know, we may create this as its own improvement district, and then those costs would be spread amongst all the land parcels.
Exactly.
So that would be the basis idea that could come from. In addition to, this fine PAC is our application from, from last year, the LCDA, and they used our project repulsor trial for the 2019 process. This, we're going to see how much public, or federal, or Met Council dollars come and they help in that effort, in addition.
So you're going to have a total cost, then you're going to have a possible grant, if we're lucky.
Correct.
So you'll have a net cost that the city either has to eat or recover in the full build-out of this development. So that's kind of what I'm trying to understand, is what, what do you envision for that?
Well, the idea is that, so we, as you show here, we're going to get as much grant, we can cover and knock that down. That's number one. And then number two, we want to distribute that back into the land cost, so as the individual developments come along, they each pay their piece of the overall infrastructure development process to zero that out and go forward there. So the idea is to keep the development internal, so that all expenses are paid back within the project, plus what we can get on the grant process. So it's not a burn upon the taxpayers at all, but using basically proceeds from land sales that cover infrastructure and so forth, to make it self-financing, if that's a proper word to use.
There may be financing issues with timing.
And that's where we're going to sit...
For-term financing.
And that's where we're working, what Dana and Pat referred to, and said to all the staff right away, and outline that, get a structure to it, to give a feel to it that they're comfortable with. So that's a key next step to embark on.
So one of the questions that Mr. Gregory asked was design standards. Do the design standards include things like grading plans? Because the topography of this land, there's, there's pretty hilly out there, so you're going to have to move a lot of dirt. Where's that dirt going to go? What all is in, in those design specifications, and when would we see those? I'm curious whether or not we'd be able to see those before we're going to be asked to make a, a decision, right? I'm kind of thinking, I'd like to see all of that, I'd like to know how this is going to work, and at this point, conceptually, I, I like the ideas, but we don't have any of the details, at least, I'm not comfortable with any of the details. So do those design specifications, what all do they include? And when would we get them?
So, so I'm going to walk through a bunch of stuff on it, and I can just start from the outside in, meaning, on-site issues, park areas, billow areas, setbacks, sidewalk, parking areas, landscape, lighting, pedestrian connections, trail connections, overall, I call high-level landscape design, that's, call it the site. Then I start into the buildings, density, height, materials, setbacks, scale of buildings, length of facades, height of buildings, number of units per building, degree of underground parking, is going to be a package within it, because that's going to describe how the buildings grow, how they're going to step, and then we get into the uses. Types of uses in this area are going to be very critical. The mix of housing, the mix of retail, for example, where I don't show a building, Pat, you can put the cursor on that green area below the oval, you know, I've left that open for potential, and for senior housing by the county, as an idea. It stands to that, so we get a bit of the, what I call formal housing mixed in with the private sector housing. Townhouse design, sectors, how those are approached, transportation, roadway design, road width, curb design, all that stuff has to sort, be sorted out tight enough that we agree upon it, but loose enough, so we don't strangle our development partners. So there's a real narrow balance there, that you want to be descriptive, but not to a point where it's overly burdensome. So there's a lot of, that all occurs, we meet with the city and get our basic, call it, financial agreement stuff, that's going to be part, because that goes into...
Grab this again.
This guy, because the Met Council is going to want to see that same information. So this package of goodies here, which goes, you know, you know, it's just the design portion of it, yes, that's going to have to all come part and parcel as this thing comes along.
But that whole thing is July first, right?
Yeah, there's pretty, the chunk, a good chunk of it.
A chunk of it.
You know, and I didn't, and I left out part of this, because I don't want to put any of the bank financial records in, but yeah, there's a lot to pull together quickly.
Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
I have some, I have quite a few questions here for you. I want to talk first about the grant and the timing of the grant. So one of the things that I want to caution my colleagues about is, this grant process happens every year, and it feels like we are really under the gun, and as exciting as this project is, I think it's important to get this project right for our community and for our taxpayers and for the rest of us. So while I think that we have a great opportunity ahead of us, and I think it's a good goal to try and make the grant application this year, but let's say that might not happen, we're just not ready, and we don't want to push it that fast, tell us, is that a deal breaker for you guys? If we don't get the grant application in process this year, is that a deal breaker?
It's not a deal breaker. The reason why I push is actually for the, for the city, because the city has never participated in the LCD process, and part of it is getting your name into the cycle. If you think like St. Louis Park, they pulled out of that close to eight million over its freight, because the name was known, and they kept going back. Brunsville, heart of the city, same deal, Edina, which we've gone back, sort of times Minneapolis, so the, so part of it is, again, because the beauty is, if we, if we, let's say, if we miss it, there is a pre-application, we get in November, but some ways, why don't you get up in front and in, so that there's a recognition that here we are, we're in the process, we're in this round. Another reason I push it a little bit, because elections sometimes are tricky. Right now, we're in good shape, but if elections went differently, they would abolish the grant entirely. That was some of the position on the rebook on the side of legislature, because they wanted to take back Met Council, pull it back in the legislative process. So I, a little bit, I want to get it out there, because we have a fiscal excess dollars that's been established in the budget, and timing is good at this moment, in terms of makeup of the council. So it's not a must, but I will call it a highly recommendation.
So...
No, go ahead, Michael, jump in here. Councilmember McMillan, I think one of the things that, and this also responds to Councilmember Vogel's question, the way we're looking at structuring the application for the LCDA is that while it, it initially covers the entire thirteen-acre parcel, what I think the strength of this application is, is the first phase, really, the, the town square portion, the infrastructure, the placemaking that this creates, and coincidentally enough, that's, we're looking towards the funds that will be put towards those uses. One of the things that the LCDA grant requires you to do is be very specific in where that money is going to be used, and it's, it's much easier for us to figure out, now that we've made a commitment as to the first two buildings, to sort of price those, to figure out the development costs, figure out the infrastructure costs for that first phase, if you will, which will be the, which will be the primary focus of the LCDA grant. Much of the work we're going to do for the LCDA grant beyond that is work that we will do anyway in, in fleshing out the, the, the master plan. So I think it will come in kind of an orderly fashion. We have two dates. We have a July first application date, and then there is a date at the last day of August, in which we have to basically flesh out the rest of the application. These applications are really time-intensive, no matter when you do it, but once you jump in, it's probably most effective and most efficient to kind of do it in one, in one chunk, and we're going to be doing it sort of as part of the development plan anyway. The last thing to know about this is, the, the grant application will be specific as to the individual uses, or the, the amount of money that's going to be used, and how it's going to be used in the first phase, which is pretty easy to figure out. The rest of the development, the master plan that builds on that, I think can be described as somewhat aspirational at times, for which you don't have to have a completely fleshed-out development agreement, a completely fleshed-out development plan, or developers. You have to have a plan, you have to know what you're going to do, and the direction in which you're going to do it. You have to plant the flag with respect to how the money is going to be used. I'm sorry, that's a little lengthy, but I want to give a little indication of how we'd approach this.
Sure, and I can add one last piece of...
Sure.
Which Michael made to remember, is, the beauty of this is, we, it's not one and done. St. Louis Park applied three years in a row to develop Excelsior and Grand. They took in, they took about six million in. Our hope is, if we can win this round or get it established, they will may come back for other portions of the thirteen-half acres, or maybe other aspects of the downtown, as they may come available as council so wishes. So we sort of, we want to sort of get that guys into the system, the city of Victoria, into the system, to take advantage of subsequent rounds, because once you've built up the reputation of the city, that the city is really engaged in this, what I call very urban visionary type of design, you have the ability to come back again, and that's the other reason why. I think it makes sense, so, thank you.
I think you answered my other question. So my, my question was around getting, kind of having the Met Council be familiar with this project and, and our community for these kinds of projects. Is it that you can reapply and continue to get money, or is it, if you get bypassed, you're more familiar the next time, and it increases your chances for the next round?
How does yes and yes sound?
Perfect. I, I think that's, I think that's it. Okay, I have another, I, can I keep rolling?
Yep, go ahead.
So my other question is around the design standards. So one of the things that, that we know is, we want a beautiful mixed-use development down there. We want housing, and we want some services, and we want some retail down there, and a lot of that is all market-driven, right? We understand that. So one of the things that we've sort of aspired to is to have these kind of unique individual retail stores and those kinds of things. A lot of those are single people entrepreneurs, they don't have big corporate backgrounds. So one of the things that I would ask you about the design standards is, how do you build sort of that affordability around commercial space into, that, that would attract the right kinds of...
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to walk you through the structure of that. So first starts with the building design, to allow the retail to happen, and in these buildings, you see here, and we see where the gray is outlined, the first floor of the building is going to be concrete construction, because that allows retail to occur, which is number one, which normally in a four-story building, you would not do. You would just build your garage, and then four stories is a stick and call it good. But that would preclude retail out of the mix, so that's going to be the first opportunity...
It's a garage plus the first...
Plus of concrete, and that allows retail to occur in the building, and that's, that's going to be in all the major buildings you see in this, because that's really essential. The second is, we're going to make it incremental. What that means is, normally, when you do a freestanding retail building, it has to be a freestanding retail building. The beauty of this is that we're going to design it with individual entries about every twenty feet, same scale as an apartment. So let's say, year one, we may have only three or five retail tenants show up. The rest can be housing and convert later, because all these buildings that are on the main roads are all going to have individual entry at grade, with angled parking in front, so the parking inventory is there, and the individual entries are there to allow it to occur. So that's going to be people, so if someone wants a retail as small as what would be a size of an average apartment, seven hundred square feet, five hundred square, they could. If they want larger, they can double up on the space, if it grows further, then they extend across a hallway and so forth. So it gives that idea of incremental growth, because what you want to do is seed new tenants, hope they grow, tenants that come out of the community, and then evolve in the space. So that gives a flexibility of size, because generally, if you look at most retail centers, you have to buy big increments, two thousand square feet or better on average. So that gives a variety of size and ability in that aspect. And then the third part is, as we develop the pro forma, and costs of land and so forth, we're going to have to find a price of retail that, I can just put the word out there, that it's going to be reduced, to allow this to occur, because if you look at, you know, major retail centers, rents are twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five, and it makes it hard for smaller retails to occur. So we're going to have to look in the picture of this thing, to get rent per square foot, that gives them a chance, but yet helps the development succeed. So that's going to be part of the balance and the study of that, because I get your question, we've got to make it... Because I get your question, we got to make it affordable, but still make the development work to get that variety within it. So those are really the aspects that's going to have to occur and, and to make this retail, uh, idea come to life.
So the retail, um, they wouldn't necessarily live there as well?
They could if they wish. For example, um, if we assume a central corridor, they could have their apartment on the rear side of the building. Their retail store could be on the front if they wish. And the corridor would surprise, think apartment where there's units on both, and you're not going to get this on camera, units on both sides, corridor here, this side would be the retail, this side could be the units if they wish. It's really up to them. Some cases, they may live within their retail space. I mean, it's going to, yeah, it's going to be that kind of.
Okay.
Flexibility to really try to get a creative range of tenants that are of Victoria to come into the project. Because what we hope is that as they grow and expand, some will move downtown, some will expand with the development. You start to create a feeder system, homegrown, that really starts creating the future of the community. And that's really some of the ideas we want to start building into this project.
Okay, okay. So now I want to go back to that grant application. What, what did you tell us was the max we could get, seven thousand?
Two, two, two million.
Two million?
Correct. Seven thousand.
Yeah.
It would be worth it, yeah.
Two million. So, um, so we know that that town oval wants to be the first part of it and you guys want to do the, those two facing buildings. And we have to provide the infrastructure at the city's cost to get that, at least that much of it going. So is there any way to sort of figure out what that would look like?
You mean financially?
Financially, yes.
If that's what Dana and Pat was referring to, we're going to sit down and really work those numbers and get that. You need that.
Have that number to allocate to the rest of the.
Exactly. Tom's absolutely right on that, so it's critical.
The grant be allowed to be used for the infrastructure?
It, yes, it's, it has to be specific. We have to list what it's going, so it's a straight grant, which is a beauty. You don't have to pay it back. But the money has to be used for what we say it's going to be used for. So let's say we use it to create the town park, to create the stormwater system, create the infrastructure. Those dollars have to be put to those functions.
Okay, so then that wouldn't be our cost so much?
Well, the, so the two million is in our cost, but there's, this infrastructure is going to cost more than two million to get us started, for sure. So it's not going to cover the cost of the infrastructure, for sure.
For the overall development, yes.
Right.
Plus you're not going to necessarily get two million. Could only get one million.
Yeah, and that.
But we can get, uh, a grant per year?
You can get a grant per year, exactly.
Each max?
Each max at two million. You know, the requirement's very year to year, but right now it's been pretty consistent.
Can the grant monies go for stuff that's already been built? Or do you have to have a current, concurrent project?
It has to be for future. It can't make it retroactive. Correct.
If we want to get the grant applying to this, we want to build it first, then the grant is important right now.
Correct.
Are there matching funds required at this grant?
No, just straight up, the, this is, this is what you choose about the LCDA. Normally you have to demonstrate a need, like I'm begging for the money. The LC looks at opposite. If you have the financial strength, they're more likely to give you money. The more you're positioned financially, the more they'll give you the money because they want that money to go to work right away. So the beauty of this is, you know, fortunately I have Greg with us. You've demonstrated good financial capability. That's a big plus to having the grant be acceptable as opposed to the opposite, which is always need based. So that's what's nice about this program.
So let's talk a little bit about this development agreement that's so unique. And, um, you know, I, I applaud your fortitude for bringing it, uh, bringing it forward and seeing if we can figure out how to partner in, in a different way. So I think, you know, I, I appreciate that creativity. So do you have, or have you ever worked in, with, under this type of a development agreement before? Or would the City of Victoria be the first?
In North Dakota, have, in the oil fields. This, if, the cities had a very sort of similar dilemma and they had city land. And so, uh, we structured something similar in that. And both communities are built out now. When it was in the early year when they were in trying to figure out housing, create town infrastructure. So, yes, we have done it before.
So generally, we understand that the risk is greater, obviously, than, or it could be. Um, but in that example for instance, how did that end up in the long run? In the long run, does it?
They got built and they got occupied. And that's, and they got built and they were unique designs.
Okay.
Because it wasn't just try housing, a park was created, uh, similar elements of, of space and function to it. So it was in that basis. Because it's easy to do what I call track development.
Mm-hmm.
Because that, you know, goes highest, you want to go the highest denominator, maximum units per square acre of land, how can I squeeze and make it work? This is a little bit different because this is why we suggested this method because we're self-imposing development limits on this. We're saying no more than four stories. We're saying townhouses, you know, the whole outreach could have been additional apartments. You know, the count of three hundred could easily have been six hundred in this. Retail would have been just at the corners. It could have been a very different development, but, but working, we basically imposed this because based on working with staff, based on your wishes, in which you created, this is the right scale to enhance downtown and work with the city as opposed to something that's a very different, more intense model.
Deb Moore?
Not, I'll let somebody else have a turn.
Thank you.
When they award the grant, um, are they all awarded at one time? Is it a?
Yes. The way it works is, you know, we, we get the initial application in final, then there's an interview in which Dana and Pat will be there. And there's a committee, but usually when you make it, what I call the beauty pageant, you're in the money. If they're interviewing you and you make a presentation, you've got your award. And then in January is generally when they issue a letter saying you're there.
So would you not start development until you get that award in Janu-? So if we make this grant, um, application process this year, this cycle, when do we start development?
Now, I'll use a bridge or example, as long as you don't spend on the designated items, we could start development. I'd have it, it's, it's the designated items, let's say it's used for stormwater and the development of the park, for example. Those pieces have to wait for the award, but let's say overall infrastructure, things like that are grading. That kind of stuff can come in head, yeah, on that basis.
Just the design timing.
Yeah, so you got.
Time to do design, all the engineering, it would be spring of next year.
So are we just responsible financially for the infrastructure?
We?
The council, the city?
The city would be responsible for the infrastructure. We'd be responsible for the first two buildings.
I like your predicate, just infrastructure, yes. Yeah, that's how we're looking at it.
And that time line could go directly to the infrastructure.
But.
And then what about the land? We, are we giving you the land?
No, you know, we, I don't want to get into deals.
Okay.
But, because we got to go with staff, but I'm, I'm going to. Yeah, so I don't want to.
We're not going to negotiate this.
Yeah, so I'm going to say just.
All right. It's hard to decide all this without looking at.
I know. They wanted to respect staff, give time for them to catch up in council. So we're taking the servant layers as opposed to one big swoop.
Okay.
So I'd like to add a, a couple of points and emphasize both with Mr. Vogt and Deb said. Uh, I don't want to lose sight of the fact that Carver County by demographics is probably the wealthiest, and I think it is the wealthiest, uh, county in the, in the city. City of Victoria is one of the wealthiest cities in the county. And I didn't see the report myself, but I've been told that, uh, all the local news channels said that Victoria grew at a thirty-seven percent clip, I think it was last year, which is the fastest growing, uh, community in the state, at least in terms of percentage. Um, given all of that and that this growth has, is not just an aberration, but has been going on for years, uh, I look at this and I see the City of Victoria in the driver's seat here. Uh, we've got everything going in our favor. Uh, and as much as I want to get this deal done and I'd like to see us, uh, come to an agreement, uh, I agree that, uh, I can't sign on it to anything until we understand all of the costs. We need to be able to show the public what the value is and allow the public to, to either agree or disagree, provide comments, question that, criticize it as they wish. Um, and I think that's an important part of the process. And so as much as I would like to, and, and I'd like to apply and, and get that, uh, grant submitted, uh, I agree with Deb in the sense that, um, uh, whatever we can do to expedite this, but I don't want to just grab and jump onto a deal just because of the timing in a matter of, of literally thirty days, right? Uh, if we can't get it done, if we can't get it done, we can always resubmit it, uh, next year. There's a lot of questions here. Uh, the public really hasn't seen a lot of these details. If, right, they need time to kind of chew through this. I think we need to get the, the deal, uh, not only the framework on how we're going to structure it, but then, uh, some of the underlying questions that go into that framework identified so that the public can see them and the council, uh, members can actually look at that. Uh, and, and I've heard a number of comments here where the city's going to pay for this infrastructure. Um, I view it in basically a phased approach. And as part of that phased approach, uh, I look at the city, hopefully with this grant, providing seed money to get it started. And then as the next phase goes, uh, that the, the, if you will, the revenue from that phase would pay for the next set of development, right? So I'm kind of looking at it, I, I don't know if it's different than other council members or staff, but I look at it as saying, uh, the city needs to come up with the seed money to, to kickstart the project. And then the project, each phase pays for the next phase, right? That's kind of how I was envisioning this developing. Um, and in order to do that, uh, you talk about the two buildings. You know, I'd want to look and make sure that there's guarantees because part of this is playing devil's advocate and say, okay, let's assume we get the grant and assume the council agrees to provide whatever funding is necessary to put that infrastructure in. I want to know the answers to the questions, what happens if the, if you start the buildings and then for whatever reason your financing collapses or the buildings stop? And the city's sitting here with these buildings and infrastructure, what do we do then? We've got money and sunk costs. I, I need to understand how we're going to protect the city and the taxpayers, right? So this is all part of what I need to see, at least from my perspective, in the deal. Uh, and I think the public has every right to know that how are we going to protect the public's investment here? Um, so those, uh, I know this is happening quickly. The, the, uh, I don't want to, to throw water on the fire here. I want to continue the thing going, but we have to, we can't go so fast that we lose sight of these details, uh, such that we make a decision without fully understanding the impact and the long-term financial effects, uh, to the taxpayers on those decisions. So, uh, I just wanted to add those comments. Council, uh, other comments on this?
I support what you said with the caveat that, uh, we should discuss this evening whether realistically we can do something to facilitate that grant and have, uh, some type of an agreement that would start us rolling with the idea that in order to develop all the knowledge and information and, and put this in front of the public, uh, it's going to take months. So that, you know, this is a simultaneous kind of thing. Um, I'm not afraid to get something rolling here. And if, uh, if the grant flops and, uh, we can't get something together and there's no interest in these buildings, uh, we just can turn off the switch and coast to a stop.
So I, I.
But so I'd, I'd like to be able to say, can we do that tonight? Uh, or is, if we take the careful approach that says we need to put this out, uh, cook it for, you know, three years and let everybody beat it to death? You know, we need to be able to do both. Give this thing transparency, but, you know, get something going here. Because we've had this land for how many years, ten, twelve?
Fourteen.
Right.
Fourteen years. And the, one of the problems here is, uh, you know, we talk smart and then when we get up to the precipice and you have to dive into the water, then it's like, ooh, we're kind of high, you know, um, you know, maybe I should go down the stairs again and check it out. You know? So we got to, you know, there's another saying, I can't use it because this is a public meeting.
Yeah. Let me, let me jump in here because that's a good segue. Uh, one of the things Dana said, uh, she wanted the council to talk about tonight is, is in fact the LCDA grant. Um, the, I'd like to kind of get, uh, Dana, you and Pat wanted to talk a little bit more about that. But, uh, what I think maybe can be done, given the timeline and, and the questions, is maybe we can do a, a mini-agreement, for lack of a better way to describe it, that comes to an agreement on how we could, uh, move forward, uh, with this team to go ahead and apply for the LCDA grant, uh, as we wrestle with the bigger question. Because my assumption is, and please correct me if I'm wrong, assuming we got some sort of an agreement on how we would work together to, to submit the grant, if we got the grant, but we never got any other agreement, is it fair to say that that grant could still be used with another developer? I'm not sure if, if, if we commit to do the grant, if that is tied to you guys and you guys alone.
I may be stringing with myself, but it's the city that actually makes application. We give you all the information, put it, staff makes application, it goes through the city. The money is rewarded back to city. If, because basically what we're doing is supporting the infrastructure. So if, you know, and guys will probably kill me for answering this, you could do it with another developer because it's really geared for what I call the permanent infrastructure as part of this development, not specific to the buildings.
So that answers the question. I, the, um, council, if you'll indulge me, indulge me for a moment. I'd like Dana, you and Pat, you wanted to add a little bit more about the, uh, LCDA before we, uh, before the council discusses a bit? Or did I misunderstood what you said at the beginning of the meeting?
Um, just for, um, the public's benefit and, uh, for the, for council, um, part of entering into, whether it's memorandum of understanding or some sort of professional services contract, if that's the direction that you do to, for us to work and, and Mr. DeVos to take a, um, a lead in, in helping compile that information. Um, they had, um, proposed a fee for that to happen. And so, um, we've talked about it and that was one of the things that, uh, we wanted to talk about. Mr. Smith and I wanted to talk with the development team afterwards was to really kind of fine tune what that would look like. Um, in doing our due diligence, it's, uh, many cities do not pay for that service. Um, and if they do, it's, um, amounts significantly less than what's being proposed. So we wanted to, um, what we, if you're looking at, um, paying them to do that for us, we would want the ability to negotiate on time and materials as well as, um, an amount not to exceed what we feel would be reasonable for them to do.
Right, so don't misunderstand my comments. If, if it's not typical that the city pays for this, then I don't want, I don't think Victoria should, should break that barrier, if you will, and, and pay for this. If that's not typical, right, but this is new to me, so I've not been through it before.
So mayor, members of the council, Mr. Smith and I did some, um, research and reached out to a number of cities. I want to say between the two of us, we probably hit ten or eleven. Um, in almost all those cases, they have not, when working with the developer, the developer has not charged for that services. In some cases where there were, um, time constraints, uh, similar to what we're facing right now as well as a resource issue, they've engaged with a, um, a contractor, uh, like a grant writer at, uh, a dollar amount, one of the dollar amounts that was, um, in two of the cases, it was at twenty-five dollars an hour. So it's a much different, it's a big gap, um, from what they proposed. So we wanted that flexibility that if that, because of the time constraints and the amount that we're doing, it would not be unreasonable to pay something to expedite that information. Um, but not, the staff wanted the ability to negotiate, um, to reduce that cost.
Thank you, let me hold you there. Council, uh, specific to that point that Dana, uh, just asked, um, um, jump in here, but my sense is is the council wants to keep this going. We want to get something submitted by this July, not wait for another year. Um, the, I don't want to negotiate this here in an open session, um, but is there a consensus among the council to direct staff to continue to work with the developers to kind of see if, if, uh, Pat and Dana can come to an agreement that they believe is, is reasonable and prudent for the city, given the circumstances?
I agree, I mean, I, I, absolutely. We, this is a great opportunity. We do not want to waste any time. I want, we want our questions answered, we want to do this prudently, we want to do our due diligence on this, but absolutely. our due diligence on this, but absolutely, we need to, we need to move forward with the understanding that we're trying to get to this July 1st date. That being said, I don't think we should give away the city in the process of doing that. And so, certainly this development team that has come before us has some expertise and some experience that we really want to capitalize on, and we should, you know, this beautiful plan does belong to them, it doesn't belong to another developer, so I think we want to certainly invite them into the sandbox and play nicely with them.
Good, good way to describe it. Mr. Vogt, anything to add to that?
Ditto, except I would add that this whole application process, you know, the Met Council is, got some intelligent people that'll be reviewing this. So this application has to be genuine and realistic, it can't be tentative, it can't be, we're submitting it until we know more. It's like, it's got to be this, we think this is the real thing, and, you know, we may not make it to our goal, but, you know, this is real. It's not tentative, and there can't be any hint of, we're going through some motions here to throw a line in the water and see if we pull in a $2 million fish. That can't, that can't even be in our thinking. This has got, we're not going to do this, we're not going to do this. And, you know, the other thing is, as far as this fee business, there's some creative ways to be looking at this that I don't think I should talk about here in this meeting, but if you think about it, there's some creative ways to make this work so everybody is happy. And the, I will say that $25 an hour, whoever gave you that, I don't know who gave you that, but I was doing grant writing in the 90s at $35 an hour, so.
We had two cities give that number.
Two cities gave you that number?
Get what you're paid for.
Wow. Did they get their grants?
Let me, let me jump in here real quick. The, are you willing to just briefly share what your track record has been with the grants? Is that something that's public knowledge?
So, if Victoria would be number 10, or nine for nine, we've probably raised, over the period, over $10 million in working LCDA's with various municipalities on that.
So it's not your first rate?
It's not, yeah, this is, this is something, and it's not, and it's not just a grant, it's a bunch of factors, it's politics, like anything, it's the quality of design, it's the financials, it's the appraisals, it's, and the reason why we got the first two, committed first two buildings, because we've got to look at that, ascertain it against the development, it's the types of uses, it's the story that goes with it, and when a story, a factual story, but why is this, why is this unique in the metro area? How is this a demonstration to other municipalities? Those are all pieces of it that have to go into it, so it's not, grant is a piece, the writing is a chunk of it, but it's all those aspects. It's very doable in the timeline, if we get to go it tonight, but it's more than just a simple, you hand in a piece of paper.
No, I get it. So you're nine for nine, right? The, Judy, it sounds like the three of us, anything to add about having staff work and trying to come up with an arrangement that works?
No, I think-
Thanks, Judy.
In order to-
Well, he didn't get to talk that much, so I mean, I just kind of-
Tom, you're just waiting for a turn to jump in, you know, at some point.
He can skip over me, I'll finish.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. No, I, I think the question tonight was to ask us if we wanted to move forward with an agreement with Mr. Margulis to apply for this grant, and that's what, and be able to negotiate the fee. And that is what I'm talking about, so that I do agree. The rest of it is going to come after.
Thank you. Mr. Gregory?
Okay.
You're sure?
I'm sure.
I think it's imperative that we put our best foot forward on this thing, this can't be put together haphazardly. And given your track record, I would very much like to enlist your help in helping us put that together. And as far as negotiating a fee, I think we've got some good people working on our side, Dana, Pat, Mark, all good people. I think they can, I think they have the expertise to be able to negotiate that in the city's best interest. And I think, and I really don't want to put a cap on it, but I'd like to just say I put my trust in staff, that we can come together on a, on some kind of agreement, but I think it's imperative that, that we enlist Dean and his team's help to put that together in order to put the best foot forward.
All right, so council, jump in if you think I'm summarizing this incorrectly, but Dana, I think the council is unanimous in directing staff to get the best deal, some sort of a fee that's reasonable and prudent, given all of the circumstances, and then bring that back to the council for discussion?
That is correct, that's what I'm hearing. Mayor, members of the council, just a quick clarification, I know in the background I said we'd execute a professional services contract, just conferring with city, our city attorney, I think from a legal perspective, and to make things go a little bit faster, we're comfortable with just executing an MOU, a memorandum of understanding for those services.
Yeah, I, council, without objection?
No objection.
No objection.
I think that's fine. And Bob, you're comfortable with that?
I am, yeah.
Okay. At this point, we've covered the highlights, I don't want to cut the meeting off, but is there other points that you wanted to get out of the council tonight, or is there other points that you guys would like to bring forward?
I think Mr. Smith has something.
Oh, I'm sorry, Pat?
So, these-
Not Pat anymore, Mr. Smith?
Mayor, members of the city council, I made some copies of an overview of the LCDA application for you, for your reference, but they are very competitive, and two of the things that the Met Council will be looking at to award these grants is, one, transit, or two, affordable housing. In this development, there's really no transit-related uses. So what to make this successful is that we're going to need some affordable housing component to this. And one of the things that has been talked about in the past is doing some type of a partnership with the Carver County CDA to do some senior housing as part of this. So I think it would be wise to get the city's council's direction and comfortability of having senior housing as a component of this development, so that we can include that in the grant application to make it as successful as possible.
Yes, I agree with that.
Yeah, regardless of the grant or not, I think affordable senior housing is almost a must on this, so I'm very much in favor of locating that CDA building on the southern portion of that oval.
That doesn't make our developer friends crazy. That feels, that feels like-
No, that was actually our intent to work that in.
Well, I can speak to that.
And you can jump in, just so you say, in terms of Pat, he's absolutely right for the competitors, but, you know, there's ways to make it work, this had no housing, and you get deducted points for that, we still worked out, so we can overwork, we can get over the transit if we get the rest of the application strong, just what Pat is aligning to.
From affordable senior housing side, it's kind of opportunistic today. We just had our fourth meeting today, we started meeting last summer with a think-tank of about eight different firms to look at the design and development for affordable senior throughout the metro. We just met our working lunch here today for our fourth group, we had about seven or eight people involved. So, we'd be very interested in looking at affordable senior, we may bring a special partner with us that has more experience on the senior side, but we'd love that opportunity. We've made a big effort ourselves.
All right, thank you. I'd like to add in, Pat, the council's previously approved, and we have an ongoing program right now with Southwest Metro that I'm not sure if you're aware of, and what do we call it, the rideshare?
Prime.
Prime, thank you.
Southwest Prime.
Southwest Prime. So, I don't know if that qualifies for, or somehow plays a role here, but staff has details that may help us, especially with the application process, so.
So, does the CDA need to be a part of this development, or can they do it on their own? Because they've came, they've come to us and said they would like to develop in this area as well, so.
To me, this, to your point, the, that's an excellent point, because as I look at this, I've always envisioned this as phases, and if we bring somebody else to the table, it fits into the overall design, we should be able to work with them directly.
Yeah. And that green area at the far south end of the, the reason why I didn't put a building there was to reserve it for something like the CDA, so I didn't like-
So they could do this on their own?
Well, you'd be part of the overall development, it just depends how you work with them, and incorporate with them, because, you know, that's how I'm like a design guy, is that, because they're going to have to come into the same set of rules, but they could fund it separately, or they could be through us, either way, we're flexible.
We'd be open to leveraging off of what we have, because the last time we discussed this with them is if they could just leverage off of existing initiatives to help in their building process.
Okay.
Sure.
That's, that's what they're looking for.
Exactly, so.
Well, I'm just wondering about that fee that they're proposing, if that would, if they could, if they would be charged as well, or we would be charged as well?
That's the kind of thing that the CDA looks, looks at.
Okay.
And there's, that's where, you're right on, that's what the CDA would be looking at.
Okay.
Some breaks.
Correct.
I think anything with the CDA, we could either bring independently, or it kind of three parties together, it's all part of what needs to be worked out in the details.
Okay.
Again, it comes back, the devil's in the details here.
Right.
So, Deb, Mr. Vogt, any objections with staff working with CDA and having those discussions?
If I had a CDA t-shirt, I'd rip open my shirt right now.
So I'll take that as a yes. Deb?
I don't have a CDA t-shirt, but I'm with Tom on this one, yeah. Councilmember Vogt.
So it sounds like the council's supportive of having those discussions. Do you need, anything else from the council on that?
I'm comfortable with the direction given, I don't know if there's anything else missing, so, thank you.
Okay, at this point, Pat, let me just clarify, do you want me to call you Mr. Smith, or do you want me to call you?
That's fine, and thank you for asking.
It's your choice, right?
That's good.
The, is there anything else, Pat, Dana, that we need to cover?
Nothing from staff.
Council?
I'm good.
I just, I'm playing the stubborn German, I want to return to this concept that we're serious about this, we're not serious about this, and we basically have to get to some closure on a few things by the end of this month, and if we're not going to do that, we're wasting a lot of time. So the idea that we can have this glorious review by the citizens of Victoria that will string on for six months, isn't really realistic. We, we can do things in the next couple of months to bring everybody into this.
Right.
But we have to come to some concrete conclusions in three weeks, or this is a waste of time, I'm going to repeat it again. So, that's it.
Any final comments?
Just a note, it's before the vote, so I don't want to jinx it, but really excited to jump into this, and thank you, and, Tom, we're in the same opinion, we don't want to waste our time with this, I mean, it's a commitment, period, so, and so, we'll get it done with staff and council's help.
Perfect. Cindy, do you have everything you need from council? Okay, at this point, if there's nothing further, I move that we adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? We are adjourned.
Thank you.